There's buttons and it gives those green to red. And the button I hear really is off into it. And it just don't get shut. But they all come down. So.
The time starts?
They start. It didn't have to be. Yeah. Oh, it used to be over there. I don't know where it is. Okay.
I think it's up in there somehow. What else is it like? Well.
I think you're out here this time.
How does it go?
It's a big ugly project.
Yeah.
There were times we had a, what was it, seven story office. I'm pretty sure we had a, what do you remember? We had a painting about the case of last year. It's a telltale. It was seven. But actually, somebody had it. It was a picture of the five fires. It was a lot of.
You know, like.
It's kind of like. We first read it first. And then he got still. It was. Down with that.
But of course, they would also have to move the pad to have the three-foot setback between the primary residence and the structure itself.
In other words, the pad would have to go over against the fence.
And then it wouldn't work because it's too close to the fence.
Okay. So as it was currently planned, it would not be approved? And if it comes back in a form that it meets our code, then you could approve it without bringing it back to us? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Are there members of the public? Is the applicant here first? Would you like to speak on this?
I have five photos I'd like to present, if I may.
Please come up to the mic. You need to speak into the mic so the people that are watching from home can hear you. And please do state your name.
Mark Williams. I'm a property owner. Katie, how do we best display the photos on the jump drive? We have hard copy handouts, would that be a place to do it somewhere?
I think they're going to be able to put it up on the screen.
Okay. Thank you. Right, thank you, Katie. First, there's quite a bit of excavation performed on our side of the fence, as one would expect, because this is predominantly a yard, low drought resistant yard renovation project. It really, it only has a small construction component, which explains why it wasn't permitted. We came here and went through various permitting things, and I have documents saying no permit required. So we thought we were good. However, on that previous, on that number one slide, you can see what the fence looks like from a typical spot in an adjacent neighborhood. This is, you can see it's really only six and a half feet from, because there was no excavation performed on adjacent neighbors. And we're going to fill it back in on our side, obviously, and so we're really only talking this much fence size, this much fence, six inches. Any objections to that termination? I mean, it is what it is, it's six and a half feet from the standpoint of the neighbors. Further, I have a petition signed by each of its five adjacent neighbors that says they have no objections to the design and appearance of the fence. In fact, if I may also present, I have a card from an adjacent neighbor northwest, Mary, Mary Mallon.
Yeah, west.
She sent her picture, because she's an absent owner, and she just loves the fence. She says, "Thank you so much, I really appreciate it." And I present that, we can add that to the record if necessary, it's on the jump drive. And you have it. So basically, everybody has signed off on the fence. I did the petition pursuant to a request from Katie. In addition, I have a dozen other signatures of people that live across the street that can see that short little piece where the seven-foot gate is going to be. They also, there are no objections to the fence from the adjacent neighbors. You can even see the little, if you kind of look between the two trees, they don't object either. And also, that petition can be submitted for the record.
And I think Katie, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the petitions that he's referring to and the card have already been presented to the commissioners. So we have those in front of us. Yes, we do.
Yeah, I was not aware of the total content of the day. Further, I mentioned to Katie last.
Could you please speak into the microphone, because we take.
Further, I mentioned to Katie that during my bicycle exercise travels, I see seven-foot fences and six-and-a-half-foot fences, which is really at issue here, right? Can we agree it's a six-and-a-half-foot fence? By the time it's going to be done, that's all that's going to be showing, is that there's seven-foot fences everywhere. And I picked five examples here and measured them pursuant to a request from Katie. She says, "Give me the addresses, measure them, and show me." Rationale, a reasonable person driving around the neighborhood would believe that a seven-foot fence, these are their sevens and six-and-a-half mixed in here, with their addresses so noted, is okay. And John and I built that fence just to cover the bottom windows, where I showed you the other day, Katie. And we were very careful to make it as low as possible to cover an existing structure that, I don't know if you noticed, the neighbor behind me, I don't want to bother him, his dog just died, right? So to tear that, so we just wanted to get right over that, and we made it as short as physically possible. So it's, in fact, to conclude, it's a landscaping project with a small construction component. There's another seven-foot fence. I mean, they're everywhere. And we thought it was good. And so, you know, the reasonable person argument, you guys are lawyers, right? It just proves that there was no negligence or criminal intent, right?
Okay.
And that's basically gone. Thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Was that helpful or not? I don't know, you tell me, guys.
I think so.
And six inches, really, is all we're talking about.
Do we have any questions for Mark? Ed?
Sure.
The obvious question, I'm sure you've heard this before. Why didn't you do what everyone else does, which is build a six-foot fence and build a lattice above it?
I don't particularly like lattices.
Don't like lattices.
But this is the fence that John recommended that we build, based upon measurements we were taking and where I was standing.
Who's John?
The contractor.
Okay, sorry, I.
I'm sorry. This is John David from Prime Landscaping. We measured it, we did various experiments, and Ryan also, I believe, has some perspectives of the photos from inside of my house to maintain a block.
I would think Prime Landscaping's been around here for a long time. They have to know, and it's not just Capitola that has a six-foot fence rule. I mean, it's hard for me to fathom how that slipped by.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You say you don't like lattice work. I can understand that. And I don't believe you had any intent to build something illegally, I want to say that, first of all. The trellises that you've got every so many feet that extend above the seven-foot fence, I assume you're going to grow something on those?
Yes, the intention there is to, yes.
Okay. And you could grow something on the two-foot trellis, too, if you liked, if you had one. I'd like to get to my question in the front yard, though. Your rock wall or everything, the only concern I have with it is on the driveway side where it gets within two feet of the back of curb.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll be honest with you, it is a large concern of mine, because what it does is it makes, if somebody parks on your side of the street, unable to open the door fully, getting out of the car on the curb side. And while I see the majority of the concrete fences at three feet, I'd like to see that continued and it more closely aligned with your neighbor immediately to the east, the gentleman with the new white picket fence. And I was out in your neighborhood on Saturday and did talk to your neighbors, and not everybody was what you painted. You know, obviously, somebody complained, and that was a neighbor, and maybe I caught one of them, but. I have a couple more questions, though. The shed in the backyard, are the, I would call it the roof supports or the rafters or whatever you want to call them, that extend past your rear fence, are they to be cut off?
I believe Ryan and I have an agreement to remove, correct me if I'm wrong, John, two inches to three inches to bring it to an 80-foot maximums the access altitude?
No, no. I'm more concerned whether the rafters are going over into a right-of-way in the rear of your property.
Negative pursuant to the.
They are now. I mean, when I was out there Saturday.
So we're looking at a picture of your.
There's a picture of it. Third picture tonight had it, that the staff had. There it is, right there.
You can kind of see it right here.
Yep.
When I spoke with the owner, he was saying that he was going to cut those off to be even with the property line. I'm assuming that's still the plan.
And then the next question is the enclosure for the hot tub, where I can see the anchors for the four-by-fours in the concrete. Are they going to attach to the shed in any way? Or is there going to be a space between it?
There will be a space.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you weren't exceeding the 80 square feet. There won't be a roof extending over that or anything like that?
I have a photo, actually, of what we're going to build of that.
I'd like to, I'd love to see it, yeah.
Certainly, I can get it right now, if you'd like.
Sure. Take the time, I won't ask any more questions.
I just happened to have brought that, because it couldn't run around the ground.
Is the intent to give you a little privacy in the hot tub for that structure around the hot tub? It's going to be like a gazebo type of thing, or something to that nature?
May I approach the commissioner?
Sure.
Yes, and bring it to the dais, please.
It's something like this. It's a Japanese style.
Okay, okay. So it won't be, I was more concerned that.
If you'll go back to the mic, that would be great.
Not going to be enclosed there, and it shows it to be open. Thank you.
Do you want to see this?
You may keep that for your records.
The staff can keep it.
Well, you pass it around. Basically, it shows the floor and fauna that we're also going to add, and also demonstrates my previous assertion, this is generally a drought-resistant yard renovation project with a small construction component in reality.
Thank you.
Further questions? Oh, regarding the, I didn't answer your question regarding the front wall. It's poor concrete, and there was an issue with a two-foot distance from the curb?
At the driveway end of the wall.
Correct.
The rest of the wall is all at three feet, according to your digrams and what was presented tonight, and I don't have any problem with that. Where it attaches or where it comes right to the driveway, it shows it to be down to two feet, which gives a problem with trying to open car doors without banging them into your wall or something if they were to park in that area. And I was just wondering if you could, if there was any way you could adjust the plans a little bit to get a three-foot clearance from the back face of the curb with the entire wall, and I would have no problem with it. I'm just telling you what my feelings are.
I think a bit of compromise here is in order, and if I may suggest, first of all, I had a hedge, a 60-foot hedge that went right out to the curb. That had to keep trimming year after year, and many of my neighbors sadly got excessive parking distance tickets from the parking violations. So, once that is gone, they're so happy now. I'd be quite happy, for a significant distance that you specified, to put an inset and a rubber top along the part top of that wall, so if anybody were to inadvertently strike it with the door, no damage would ensue.
Well.
And do that at my expense.
I'll be honest with you, I prefer at least the three-foot. The reason being is, when people pull up, they may not see your rubber bumper or not. It almost reserves parking spaces in front of your house by putting anything in that right-of-way. And that's why I look for an encroachment line, what you're, where you're really encroaching in the street right-of-way. And you see where the two and two feet is there? It's only two feet long. If that were back, it's only, you see where I'm talking about? Right there, yes. If that was carried back to the three-foot level, I would have no problem with it. They're doing the right thing with the pointer. It's only at the driveway point exactly.
I can make a comment, though, Ron. If he's parked, if you've got somebody parked in that spot opening a door, they're going to be blocking the part of the driveway.
Oh, I understand that. I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm also very familiar with the jewel box. Nobody enforces parking in people park on both sides going both directions. Ask Kirby and ask Ed Newman, kind of true. One more final question.
I'm just trying to understand how a door would hit that part.
If it were, a door opens out on a vehicle, most vehicles, a distance in order to let people out. And if they were parked at the curb, not 18 inches away, but if they were parked at the curb, they could swing the door and hit your wall. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Possibly, if there was a door located at the extreme rear of the vehicle pursuant to Madam Commissioner's observation.
Well, I don't want to argue with you over that, so, okay.
I'm quite happy to do that.
I was just trying to get some kind of, give on your part to three feet, is all.
I'm not saying I'd be quite happy to put a nice, significant rubber strip across there to mitigate any damage in the.
Oh, I'm not worried about damage, okay.
Well, I am, because these are my neighbors.
Yeah, well.
And I'm quite happy to do that at my expense.
The final question I've got is, very familiar with the neighborhood. When was the garage addition done and stuff?
The garage was part of the original structure of the house, sir, when it was built. There was, unfortunately, and I know this from countless refinancings, the original building permit for the house was lost in 1949, when the city was incorporated, when the records were transferred from the county to the city. I have a letter to this effect someplace, I believe, right? I do have a permit, though, for the addition, hence the L-shaped size of the structure. So basically, there's two 40 by 40, four by 80 square foot lots. The house was built sideways, including the garage. And then, on the east side of the house, an addition was placed on, of which there is a building permit on file. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Do you know when it was done?
Yes, that was done seven years later, in about 1955, 56.
Okay, that's the reason there's no records of it here. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, I don't have any other comments, I'll save them for when we decide on the issue.
Thank you, I appreciate your consideration.
TJ, any questions?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this item? If so, please approach the podium and state your name, and if you don't mind, write it down so we make sure that we get it correct in the minutes.
My name is Ron Wood. I live next door, 4575 Opal. We probably all know it is Holiday Inn. I have no objection, because I signed the petition, but I'm here tonight to ask planning, as well as you, if I can continue the same fence into my yard. Okay? I need to do this so I can match their fence. That's all I want. Is that possible?
We can't respond to that without an application, so, or a change of ordinance. We're going through, at the present time, new zoning ordinances, and if the new ordinances call for a larger or higher fence in the rear yard, you obviously would be permitted to do it. But if you did it as this gentleman did it now, the height is six feet with two-foot lattice on top, you can do that now without any permits. But to get the seven-foot fence that he's got, that's the reason he's here.
Okay, so, I can't be assured of doing the same thing on my property, to make my property look the same? I mean, all fences should be, on your property, should be the same. Fifty years of construction.
I'm going to make a comment to my fellow commissioners as how the six-foot fence came along back in the years when it was first put in the ordinance, but I'll wait for that. I'm not going to argue back and forth.
I'd take this gentleman's comment, really, to be sort of a opinion, indirectly an opinion as to the application of.
No, I'm totally not opposed to.
Right, I understand. We can't, I mean, we can only deal with an application that comes before us. We can't give advisory opinions about future.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's a better explanation, thank you, Ed.
And I think if staff has any comment, that was a question, really, that was more addressed, I think, for staff to answer than for us.
He would be required to come before this board for the seven-foot exception.
That would start a trend that we could carry on? That would start a trend in the neighborhood?
Speak into the mic, please. And I think that goes back to the comment that we can't, staff, answer that question, please.
Sure, Madam Commissioner. You know, we review each application based upon the merits of the proposal itself.
Would you not agree that if someone is given the right to do this, that everyone should be able to do it? I mean, I certainly would. That's what I want. I want everything to be the exact same.
I think within a, you know, to a reasonable point, yes. I mean, you know, each property might have different characteristics where it wouldn't be the same. But I think one of the commissioners earlier on talked about a precedence, possibly, and I think, you know, once you do start offering people permits for a certain type of use, and if somebody else has the same characteristics, you want to be even-handed and fair. But there is no guarantees.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? We try and keep it to one comment at a time unless there are more questions.
Good evening. I'm the contractor for Mr. Williams. I just wanted to address Mr. Newman's concern about the fence height. So we based it on imposing windows from their house view, and that was about that six-and-a-half feet. We really do feel it's a six-and-a-half-foot tall fence from our side, once it's backfilled. There's two very serious windows up above that appeared during the course of Mark's ownership of this house. So he's got big windows that he can't deal with. They're really tall up there. So he was at least trying to get some sense of privacy from his house, just not looking into the neighbors' windows straight out to the back. And that was the reason. So he did not want, we suggested the solid angle overlap, Conhardt redwood, a very expensive wood fencing, because he didn't want lattice. He doesn't like lattice. I'm not a fan of lattice either, if I can build a good-looking, solid fence. And so that was the reasoning for that fence. So hopefully, you'll be able to consider an okay for a six-and-a-half-foot, good-looking fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please approach the podium?
My name's Jerry Corales, and I live in the Jewel Box. I live on Jewel Street. And I drove by there, and it looks very nice, but I, everything in my house, Mr. Wheeler has been to my house so many times for all my little projects. And I really believe in complying to everything, and I, if they would get a chance to get a fence like that, I would love to have a chance to do that, too, to have maybe the, well, just make it, you know, look at your, the way all the fences are. I'm not against it, I really like it, I think it's a beautiful fence, but it's true. I have people, I have a two-story building, well, my house is two-story, but they're, they have windows, too, and, I mean, I have the same issue, but I deal with it. And when I did my backyard and I did my landscaping a few years ago, everything was in compliance with, well, the fence was in before that was, but I just did the basic with the lattice, and really, I don't like lattice either, so, I know a lot of people do. But, anyway, I do like it, I just wish I would have an opportunity without having to go through a whole bunch of, maybe this is setting a precedence for other people in the neighborhood. So just look at the, you know, the compliance in the future, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
It's a beautiful fence, I really like it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanting to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going, I'm sorry?
May I ask a question? Do I agree?
Please. One question.
Exactly, and that's all I'm going to be done.
Okay. And speak into the mic, please.
Many, many jurisdictions and venues allow decisions to be made that are not precedent-setting. I can think of dozens of federal, well, Bush v. Gore, for example, right? You can actually approve the six-inch fence exception pursuant to the building code and make it a not precedent-setting decision. Can you do that, within the realm of your authority? I do not know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if that's possible, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Would anyone like to start off? Ron?
I'll make some comments with regards to how do we get to six feet with two-foot lattice work. It occurred in the McCormick-Loma area, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the young lady's name, but a new house was being constructed on the street adjacent to her, and we kind of arrived at something that gave her some privacy with the idea of the lattice. And at that time, lattice was very popular, because I think redwoods was more expensive than it is a board foot today. So that's how we got to that. And so, it was an arbitrary thing, it has worked for years for us. The interesting thing is, if you look at this photograph right here, and you're looking at, or better yet, put the new fence up there, you'll see that it doesn't offer any protection to the upper windows, unless you're right up within three feet of the fence. However, if you had a six-foot fence and you had two-foot of lattice work, it'd provide more privacy. It's almost like it's a red herring. The interesting thing is that the lattice that you see, or the wire on the four-by-fours there, is for a climbing vine, and that will exceed the six- and two-foot trellis. That will actually be, because I measured it, almost eight-and-a-half feet. And here again, I'll be honest with you, I did not know till tonight that there was going to be backfill in there, because there's lots of places in your backyard where the fence that's there is over seven feet from ground level. I think the staff did you kind of a nice thing by measuring it where they did, because there are some places, because of the uneven topography that makes the fence larger than seven feet right now. But you've satisfied me with the rafters, but I'll tell you personally, and I'll tell you how I'm going to vote. I really think that the six-foot fence with a two-foot lattice is the proper way to go. I know you don't like lattice, I don't like lattice, but just hearing the testimony tonight, everybody'd like to do what you want to do, but until we get to that point in a new ordinance, I'd like to uphold the staff with regards to the idea that our fence height is right, and they're recommending denial. So with that, I was hoping to get a compromise out of you, which I didn't get with regards to the front encroachment. I'm really tough on encroachments into the public right-of-way, because at some day, Depple Hill or Jewel Box may not be a sidewalk-exempt neighborhood. And then these type of structures that are in the right-of-way have to be removed, and they're removed at a public's expense, all of us, everybody that lives in Capitola. So I was hoping we could pull that one corner of that new concrete wall in front back to the three-foot, and then I could, you know, probably soften on the other. You had your chance, and I've got my chance now, and I've just told you my feelings. I sympathize with you, I'm not against you, I'm just saying that that's what I feel.
I'd be willing to amend.
No more comment.
I'd do it at my expense.
We're not going to do a back and forth. Thank you very much. TJ, do you have any comments?
Well, I certainly, you know, I see the conflict here with our zoning code, but, you know, it seems evident to me. I know the privacy thing was a concern on the survey, and as the neighbors have all come up and stepped up and said they'd love to have the same opportunity, I think it's an opportunity when we have our zoning ordinance for going through that, to really take a look at it, because we do live in a small community, and I don't know that we necessarily need to impose ordinance that we currently have, if it's really not effective in helping the people who live here. So I'm kind of struggling with it, I haven't made up my mind. I see ways around it, I mean, I could play devil's advocate, and they could get a 12-inch wide, 80-foot accessory wall against the back, potentially, anyway. So to me, it leaves, you know, some room here, and I, quite honestly, haven't really made up my mind, I'm going to wait to hear what my other commissioners have to say.
Ed?
So, I'm sort of a rules person. I recently heard a young man express his opinion that it's not against the law unless you get caught. And I don't subscribe to that. I think we have to go by the rules we have, and this is basically saying there's no rule, that, I mean, if you can come in and say, "Well, I've got my neighbors to sign a petition, and there's really no harm to this, so there's no six-foot limit on this fence." And that, you know, every fence then becomes, there's no rule, it's just a question of whatever somebody wants to think you should do in a particular case. And I don't really, I think it's better, it might not be the best rule, it might not be the perfect rule, but as long as it's still the rule, I think we have to go by it. And I'm really surprised at the way this happened, because everyone knows there's a six-foot fence limit, and I just don't really understand how a professional contractor who's got a huge presence in this community goes and builds a seven-foot fence.
So, I hate speaking last.
Let me talk about the encroachment, I forgot that. I don't have a problem with the encroachment, and I'm not sure you're right about that, Ron. I think they have to sign an agreement that if the street is widened or sidewalks are installed, they will have to remove the wall.
I'm not sure what we do in the city with regards to major encroachments, whether they do sign that or not.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that that's a condition, and I'm getting a positive head nods all over the place here. So, I'm fine with the wall encroachment.
Okay, so I'm going to go completely against the grain here. My interpretation of the rule. My interpretation of the rule is different from what I'm hearing you guys say, and I can understand the intention, but when I read the code, it says you can have an eight-foot height, as long as it's six-foot solid and two-foot of lattice. And what that tells me is that it's silent on a seven-foot fence.
In what?
It is silent on a seven-foot fence. It doesn't say you can't have a seven-foot fence. It simply says you can have an eight-foot fence if it's made this way. And I know that may be a stretch, but...
It's a real stretch for me.
My logic is this, if, and when we moved into Capitola, I have a piece of property that five properties all come up against, and of those five properties, we had some that was six feet with two feet of lattice, we had some that was six-foot, when they all came together, they weren't all the same, and they weren't the same design of a fence either. So we came in and said, "Well, for privacy purposes, because it's all so tight, we wanted an eight-foot fence." And the only way to do that was to have six-foot and two-feet of lattice. And when we installed it on the three sides of our first property, our neighbors followed suit and then designed it to go the same way. But if you have, if you have a seven-foot fence, and the guy on the other side has a six-foot plus two-feet of lattice, he's not gonna ever see your fence. So in my mind, as long as it's under eight feet, the design of it shouldn't, I mean, it doesn't violate a real design.
Can we have that statute, I mean, is it possible to have that put up, so we can see what we're...
Yeah.
Give me just a moment, please. Thinking where it derives from.
And granted, I wasn't here when it came into place, so when I was looking at it, I'm like, "Well..."
No, no.
I mean, it's not overly high, and I would think that the intent for fences and the fence height was twofold, one, to provide privacy between properties, but at the same time, not to have, you know, a big, solid wall, you know, an eight-foot stucco wall or something like that would not be acceptable. But I didn't read it that it limited to only, you know, a redwood fence with two-feet of lattice on top.
Okay, so this section that I'm highlighting right here, I believe, is the section that talks about the height.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's certainly not worded as well as it should be, and we'll fix that. The interpretation in the past has been that it allows a maximum six feet with two-feet of lattice, but the wording isn't perfect, certainly.
Maximum height of eight feet, provided that the top two feet of the fence be made of lattice or other open material. It doesn't say you can't have seven feet.
Well, and I don't interpret it the way you do, that's all. We can agree to disagree.
I'm okay with that. But that's how I get to the point where I would approve the seven-foot fence from a style and a privacy perspective. When I was walking around back there, given that you've got a hot tub, and the hot tub is now moving, you know, more away from the house, you want some privacy getting in and out of the hot tub, and in and out of the storage shed, and the seven-foot fence did not seem to me to be overpowering in its neighborhood. And at the homes on either side, it drops back down to a six-foot fence with no lattice, so there's actually more openness between the neighbors than we would allow. So I didn't have any problem with the seven-foot height.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that last, because his seven-foot fence on the east side goes all the way out to where he wants to put the seven-foot gate.
But that's right at the back end of the house that's next door. It's, the windows on that house on that side are open above the fence.
I'm not judging it on, it's out to the edge of the garage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't...
I'm not judging the house next door, because I talked to the guy there and stuff.
Yeah, I did not talk to neighbors, but I did go walk around the property.
I think you're coming up with a novel interpretation of that language, and it will obliterate or greatly, gravely change our whole fence program here, if what you're proposing is the new interpretation of the fence ordinance. I mean, I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing, I just think that's not what it is now, and I don't think we, as a planning commission, on a particular application, where they go ahead and build this thing in clear, in my opinion, clear violation of the rule, that's not the way to change our ordinance.
You know, I kind of see things, I'm not sure I'm quite on board with Madam Commissioner here on her interpretation, but I do, I understand we have ordinances. To say it's breaking a rule or just, you know, is something that, I think it definitely is gonna set some precedence, but I think you gotta go back to the intent. What is the real intent? An intent is to allow some privacy without being overburdening, and I'm making maybe an assumption here. We have a consideration by the neighbors that approve of it, of course, there's no guarantee those neighbors are gonna stay there, I guess, but I think in the long term, I think it's something that will probably should be addressed in our, while we're upgrading our zoning orders or reviewing our zoning ordinances, and I hate to hold people accountable to something that is black and white today in some set, but may change, because I really think it depends on intent. You know, we could put a 20-foot hedge in there, you could put ivy growing on the lattice, there's options to get around that, to get privacy. So really, I think it has to do more with intent than what is the actual word of the law, and that's just the way I'm looking at it. And that's why I bring up the accessory building. You could put up an accessory wall if you want, and they would have to, I guess, come and try to figure out whether that is in violation of anything else. It's different than a fence, and we're calling it a, so I, to me, I just try to really look and see what is the intent of the code, and obviously, it has some room for, you know, interpretation, that's why it's sitting before us today. If it was just black and white, then I guess the staff wouldn't need us, and we could move on, but that's the way I view it.
Well, at the last meeting, just to make account of your argument, we all took an oath to uphold the rules, and this is the rule, as you're seeing it here today, and that's what I intended here.
Well, can I ask a question, then? Why is it before us? If it's a rule, then is it, do we have discretion here or not?
Yeah, Commissioner Welch, the planning commission does have discretion, I've highlighted the section that brought this item before you. The code does allow alternative locations, height, material for fences, if it's approved by the planning commission. The code does not provide findings for it, at least from staff's perspective, it was, I kind of view the exception process or over-height process similar to a variance, where if there's a hardship, an extraordinary circumstance, those might be situations where you'd grant an extra allowance. We weren't really able to find that in this particular case, although I don't know that the staff were terribly offended by an extra foot of fence, it was just that we couldn't really find anything special about this application that we thought warranted some additional height, but your body certainly has the discretion to make that decision.
So I don't see us breaking a rule here, and in my view, looking at what it looks like was an obvious concern of the public with the survey, with the people present today, I think it's within our discretion to make that exception, and I would make a motion that we approve it as the fence allowing the, I guess, the determination whether it's seven or six-foot six, I hate to say a seven-foot, I'd go with the six-foot six-inch fence, and also go ahead and approve the major exemption, revocable exemption.
Possible that it break, or would it be a good idea to break the two issues down into separate motions? Can we do that? Because I'm not sure that they're gonna go the same way.
Well, before we go there, actually, I have another question. Should we, could we get a legal opinion on my interpretation of the rule? Because I agree, I don't want to change the precedent, I don't want to, you know, rewrite the rules, but my interpretation of the rule is, I think, a reasonable one, and it's not, it's not, we're not violating the maximum height, we're not getting to the maximum height, and we're so close to the six feet as it's defined there, I'd just like to find out if it really is breaking the rule.
Madam Chair, certainly if the commission desires, we could continue this item, get a legal determination, and share that with you, and then resume the hearing after you get it.
Would the commissioners be acceptable for a continuing?
You know, that always comes up in a situation, like, I guess, I'm gonna predict that there's gonna be a two-two split on this issue when we get to voting on the fence, and the question is whether it's better off for the applicant to spend time without coming back to us, or if he's gonna appeal to the city council, which I suspect he will, to move it on, to let it go and get to the city council.
Those are the two options, I think, to continue it or vote tonight and then let him appeal it.
Yeah, and for the applicant's benefit, a two-to-two vote would be, in essence, a denial.
Well, we haven't, we haven't had a second to the motion.
Right.
The chair didn't allow it yet.
Bring us back to the...
Hey, don't be so hard on him.
Oh, he is.
I just think we got to the vote before anybody knows how we're gonna vote.
So we have, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second for the motion? I'll second the motion, I can do that. So the motion is made and seconded, roll call, vote, please.
Can we review the motion, is it both issues at once?
So on, to approve both the seven-foot-high fence and the major revocable encroachment permit, Commissioner Welch.
Aye.
Commissioner Graves.
No.
Commissioner Newman?
No.
Chairperson Smith?
Yes.
That is a two-two tie.
Yeah, I will move.
The motion then fails for lack of a, and it can go on to the council.
I'll move to approve the major encroachment.
I'll second that, I don't have a big problem with that.
Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Graves?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner, or Chairperson Smith?
Aye.
So the encroachment permit passes, and the fence fails. So it's denied, and you're welcome to appeal that to the city council.
Or he can build it at six-foot with the two-foot lattice, either way.
Or I can slot it pursuant to the code, right? The code allows for slotting.
Would have to be reduced to six-foot, and solid, and the above part would have to be lattice.
I understand what you're saying, but that would be an interpretation of...
I think that's what has been defined here as the way that the code is interpreted. Okay, that was our only public hearing on the agenda tonight. So moving on to Director's Report, do we have a Director's Report tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do have a brief report for you this evening, just a couple of items. As many recall, a couple of years ago, Ideal Homes received a temporary conditional use permit to cite the model home on Bay Avenue, they have applied for another extension. That application will go before the city council February 26th.
Which home on?
The manufactured model home on Bay Avenue in the Grimes' property.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question when we get to ours, and with regard to something in the same area.
Okay. Last month, I informed you that we'd be having a housing element workshop in March, we've now set a date. That meeting will be March 4th at 6:00 PM in our new community center across the hall. We will be sending you email notifications, probably later this week, along with members of the community with a flyer and some information, and we welcome your attendance. And then finally, next month, we will bring our zoning ordinance issues and options paper. I do want to forewarn you, it's probably gonna be a long document, and a lot of information to wade through. The good news is, we're not gonna ask you for any direction in March. We're gonna give it to you, present it, and then give you another month to digest it, give the community a time to read it over and offer us feedback, and the plan being that in April, we'll start taking pieces of that report, and hopefully manageable chunks of issues, and we'll start running them through the process. And that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I just have one question, the housing element, what was the time of that meeting?
At 6:00 PM, March 4th, across the hall in the community center.
And you will be sending out an email on that?
Yes, I'll be sending out a notice, if not by Friday, Monday.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners?
Yes, I have a communication. You mentioned the Ideal Homes. I'm concerned, that's neighborhood, Therapural Commercial, right? Bay Avenue and the, in the location of...
I believe it's a community commercial.
Is it a community commercial?
I believe so.
It is.
Oh, I, my question dealt with, how did they get a permit to store new cars on the lot immediately adjacent to Ideal Homes?
There was no permit issued.
Has there been a fence constructed, and there must be 150 cars there?
Yeah, Toyota has been using that as a temporary to store their cars while they're completing the construction of the facility.
Requires no permits, huh?
They did not obtain a permit.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Having no further comment, we'll adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting, Thursday, March 5th, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Thank you very much.
Good job.